Right, everyone, welcome to our meeting and sorry, I was waiting a few minutes just to see we were missing a couple. So let's if we could stand for yeah, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Kate, roll call.
Councilor Atkinson, Councilor Kukola, Mayor Kuzinski.
Here.
Councilor Peonesa.
Here.
Councilor Cruz and Councilor Russell, Councilor Beach.
Thanks, Kate. So we have a skeleton crew up on the council tonight, so don't all rush us or anything. We're low on manpower, so be kind. No, so we have no votes tonight, so it's okay. We don't need a quorum. So anyway, we have our agenda here, folks. Obviously, new business. I really will defer to our folks here from deep, from Brightfeeds, DPH and our ASH Acoustics to bring everybody up to date. And we'll go ahead and start with Brightfeeds. Jonathan, how you doing?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jonathan. I'm the CEO of Brightfeeds and here with me is my colleague Lakshmi and Justin from Gaffney Bennett. I want to start by saying on behalf of Brightfeeds, thank you to everyone for working with us through this period and your patience as we work to address concerns associated with the operation of our facility. To the mayor and then Representative Beach and Senator Lopes, who aren't here, the council, town manager Curly and Connecticut Deep, I want to thank you guys for collaborating with us, working with us and helping us identify solutions. We believe our efforts and investment to date have shown that it's very important to us to do right by the community. Since the last update in March, a lot has happened at our facility. First, we received the thermal oxidizer in late March and installed it in early April. As a reminder, thermal oxidizer is custom designed. It's the highest level odor solution in the marketplace. It took us several weeks to fully commission the oxidizer, so by mid-April it was working as expected. And significantly, we've measured north of 98% destruction rate for organic compounds, which are the compounds that produce odors. On the sound front, we wanted to make sure that when we installed the oxidizer, we also had a permanent sound solution. So we engaged a very reputable sound consultant to help us and identify equipment, study the oxidizer, work with the manufacturer and propose suggestions to make sure we had a belts and suspender approach to reduce noise. Some of the measures that we put in place include flying out the fan manufacturer of our drying fan, rebalanced our fan and replaced key components. We put custom sound blankets on all of the fans that are outside in our facility. We added four inches of mineral wool insulation on the ducting, leaving our drying fan. And we put two custom-designed silencers in our process to further reduce noise along with other measures. So it was really a belts and suspenders approach to reducing noise. And as of about mid-April, we increased production to full capacity and have been running at full capacity since. On the night of April 24th, we flew in our fan consultant to do testing at our facility. And so they went around town to confirm that we were in compliance with the town noise ordinance and there were no discrete tones. And I'm happy to say that from their work, they concluded we were within the town ordinance and there were not any discrete tones. So we feel, you know, at this point, very good about where we're at on the odor and noise front. And again, very much appreciate you guys working with us over the past several months. I want to conclude by emphasizing our dedication as an entire team at Brightfeeds to the Berlin community and the local Connecticut community. We're a local company. We employ local residents. We do business with with local vendors. We supply our animal feed to many Connecticut-based farms that rely on our feed for cost savings and for high-quality feed, which is very meaningful in these times. And we prevent food from turning into waste and otherwise ending up in landfills or incinerators, so lowering disposal costs and obviously environmental impact. So we're an environmental company. We know that starts with doing right by our neighbors in the community. So we'd like to find ways to invest in the Berlin community in the coming years. And again, we really appreciate all of your patience, working with us and happy to answer any questions that you have after others speak. Thanks so much.
Thank you. I also want to add our town attorney is on Zoom, Jeff Donofrio, just as part of the meeting. If we have any legal questions later in the meeting. So now, Deep, if you would, Jake.
Hey, hello, everyone.
Welcome.
Thank you. So I'm going to give the, you've heard the first part of this, but I'll say it anyways. We sincerely thank you all for bringing your concerns regarding Brightfeeds to our attention and for your continued engagement. In the interest of time, I'll briefly summarize Deep's involvement in this matter and then we'll talk about next steps. And if there's anyone here or online who hasn't been present at past meetings and would like additional background information about our role in this matter, I'm happy to provide as much after the meeting or during Q and A. As you know, we've received several complaints over the past year and a half relating to the Brightfeeds facility. And our staff has made multiple inspections of the site and surrounding areas in 2023 and 2024, now 2025. As a result, we issued a notice of violation of Connecticut's regulatory odor nuisance standard at section 22A-174-23 of the Regulations of Connecticut State Agencies. We've remained in contact with Brightfeeds representatives on an ongoing basis to continue to reinforce the importance of expeditiously eliminating nuisance odors and resolving the open violation notice. As of April 4th of this year, Brightfeeds installed a regenerative thermal oxidizer, or RTO, to control emissions of odoriferous compounds. An RTO is a highly robust air pollution control device that is commonly used to control emissions of volatile organic compounds that give rise to odor. It is generally considered more effective than other odor mitigation technologies. Our staff was on-site for the better part of the week of April 7th to witness the commissioning of the RTO. On April 7th, we witnessed Brightfeeds contractor take stack measurements of volatile organic compounds, which suggested a volatile organic compound destruction efficiency in the high 90% range by volume. This is the type of destruction efficiency that we would expect from an RTO. Over the week of April 7th, we continued to receive complaints regarding odor. We did document mild to moderate odors in the immediate vicinity of Brightfeeds on Fuller Way, including at the neighboring businesses on Fuller Way. We did not document odors farther out. As a result, and in connection with our investigation of sources of residual odor, we closely monitored the ongoing commissioning of the RTO. We have not received any newer additional odor complaints since April 15th. And we were at the site this week and didn't document any odors downwind of the facility when the process was in operation. On November 4th, 2024, we issued a test requirement letter to Brightfeeds. We required that Brightfeeds test its dryer stack for several pollutants, including total volatile organic compounds, speciated volatile organic compounds and particulate matter. Brightfeeds was required to submit a test protocol within 15 days of the transmittal of the test requirement letter. Brightfeeds complied with this requirement and we provided extensive feedback on the test protocol to ensure that testing would occur under representative operating conditions and that the proper EPA-approved test methods would be utilized. In general, stack testing in Connecticut and across the country is performed by a third-party test contractor and audited by, in this case, Deep staff. Such testing occurred on January 10th, 2025, in the presence of four Deep staff who were monitoring both the process and the performance of the test methods. Brightfeeds was required to report the results of the test program within 60 days of the test date consisted with state and federal law. We finalized our review of the emission calculations and it is clear that Brightfeeds requires a Clean Air Act permit pursuant to section 22A-174-3A of the Regulations of Connecticut State Agencies. We advised Brightfeeds of the need for an air permit, which is in this case known as a new source review permit. And Brightfeeds representatives met with our staff for a pre-application meeting during which the procedural elements of the permitting process were reviewed. Our expectation is that Brightfeeds continue to work diligently to obtain a new source review permit. We're aware that community members have asked questions regarding health effects. These questions are best answered by public health professionals. And to that end, we're working with the Connecticut Department of Public Health, or DPH, staff to provide them with the data needed to perform a health assessment. This data is extrapolated from the January stack test. DPH has specifically indicated that its health assessment is based on ambient pollutant concentration data as opposed to stack pollutant concentration data. Stack concentrations are much higher than ambient concentrations due to dispersion and dilution orders of magnitude higher. Therefore, we're currently modeling the stack pollutant concentration results in order to derive ambient data. This is a sophisticated dispersion model that takes some time to run. We anticipate completing the modeling runs needed by DPH next week and will provide DPH with the ambient data at that time for further analysis. The initial modeling runs reflect overly conservative assumptions as to ambient impact. We're happy to take any questions or feedback that audience members might have. And again, we sincerely thank you all for your continued engagement.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next, DPH, we have a representative here. Thank you for coming.
Hi, I'm Pat Pizaki and I supervise the toxicology group. Meg Harvey was here at the last meeting and speaking to you. She explained to you, once we get the data from DEP that indicates the air quality that they, people are breathing, you know, in the area they're breathing, we'll start doing a risk assessment. And we do have a little head start on that because we do know it came out of the stack. So we've been able to gather the toxicology information on all the contaminants that are coming out of the stack and identify the ones that might be of most concern. So once we get that data, we'll take about, I think, about two weeks to be able to pull some numbers together and do a risk assessment based upon what we have for data from Deep. You know, if you have any questions, I can give you a phone number to call. And once we have all that information and compile a report, share it with town and with Deep. And then at the next public meeting where we have the information, we'll present it to you. So I'm happy to answer any questions too, or take them back to our toxicologists, their analysis.
Thank you. Thank you. And S and H Acoustics, our town, yeah, Tessa's on. So Tessa.
Good evening, Mayor Kuzinski, members of the town council and Berlin community. My name is Tessa Wern, an acoustic and audio consultant with SH Acoustics. I thank you and appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight regarding Brightfeeds and its compliance with the town's noise ordinance for nighttime operations, as well as the remedial work that has been undertaken to eliminate low-frequency peaks. We would like to acknowledge Brightfeeds for their commitment to meeting the requirements set forth by the town. As Jonathan had previously stated, they have implemented a number of adjustments to address noise concerns. These efforts have significantly reduced both airborne noise and vibrational transfer. We conducted our acoustic testing on April 28th from 10:00 AM to 12:30 PM for daytime measurements and then again from 10:30 PM to 12:00 AM for nighttime measurements. The acoustic data that we received confirms that Brightfeeds remains within compliance of the town's established noise standards for both daytime and nighttime hours with no impact on surrounding residential properties. During our initial testing on January 30th, we detected a low frequency originating from the main exhaust fan. Following completion of said remedial work, the low frequency along with other tonal peaks are no longer present. Additionally, I would like to address the concerns raised regarding a low-frequency tone near 20 Hz, reportedly located near the CWPM waste plant by the intersection of Deming Road and Christian Lane. Frequency-based measurements were taken on April 22nd from 2:30 AM to 3:00 AM and then again from 12:30 PM to 1:00 PM. In both instances, our professional analysis confirmed that no 20 Hz tone is present. If there are any questions or further, if there are any questions or further clarifications needed, I would be happy to address them and our formal findings report will go public after this meeting. I want to thank you once again for allowing me to participate in this and thank you for allowing me to speak on our findings.
No, thank you, Tessa. Appreciate it. So now we'll, you folks will remain a little bit, we'll just, members of the audience, if you have some questions and then we'll, our experts here and our Brightfeeds or wherever they're addressed to, we can answer those. We'll kind of just go, you know, please ask the questions and we'll wait till we get through everybody and then we'll answer them all. Ryan, see, how did I, how did I know that, Ryan? Welcome. How you doing? Name, name and age?
Yeah, I'm an employee, 84, Juneup Purley. And I don't want to get yelled at.
No, we don't want Kate to yell at you.
All right. So obviously, all good things. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, all of you. So I think, just to level set too, and I said this to Tessa, I think the potential noise coming from CWPM was on Route 9. They're doing the nighttime, cutting trees down.
They are doing that.
Shipping. So I think that sound was coming right down because CWPM said, no, we're not doing anything. And then a day or two later, a bunch of us noticed there's tons of trees cut down.
Yeah, they were there at night, a couple nights. Yeah.
I think, I think that was the cause. So that's, that's a good thing, right? So I guess from my end, I wouldn't be me if I didn't say, where do we go from, from here? But before I do that, I do have one question because the health department data, or deep data that was going to go to health department. When we were told we were getting an update this meeting, I get that. Sounds like it went back and it's okay. But we were also told the modeling would be a worst-case scenario based on the variables that we encountered, not the current set of variables. I just want to make sure that, okay. Okay. So then where do we go from here? And I'm not going to be too long, Mark, but seeing as it seems like we're coming to a conclusion, there are a few things I do need to touch on, right?
Sure.
First is with Brightfeeds. You need a compliance model that's sustaining, right? Such as when you have a change, what needs to be tested? And John, you already acknowledged this, I think, six months ago, right? You said that once we get to that point, look to implement a governance model. I think that's a fair thing to ask, i.e. a variable changed, what might change with it, what needs to be tested, et cetera. Just have a little, you know, foresight with it. You guys know what I'm talking about. So I just want to touch on that. The town, you're not off the hook. There's a couple of things that are needed, right? You're not off the hook yet. And I'm not going away. I will come to every town council meeting going forward until I see change with this. And specifically, two things. We need to revisit the business license procedures. There needs to be industry-applicable questions asked. And if it's a new industry, such as what Brightfeeds is, there should be time given to the town to gather what those questions should be and maybe consult with a Gartner, right? Or some, some other company that might know better than we do, right? This is something I said about a year ago and it needs to be revisited. And again, I will come to every town council meeting till that's done. We'll speak at every one of them. It's not a threat. I say that laughing. All right. And then we need to modify the sound ordinance to account for low frequencies known to bother human beings.
You're already working on that. We beat you already. We beat you to it.
Perfect. Such as the 28 Hz that bothered us for two years. And I don't say that as a low blow to anybody. It's just the truth. If I had to hear that one more day, I might clinically go insane. I have a lot of discipline in the Marines. You know my background. I can tell you stories being put in sand flea pits, having to stay at attention, which they knew we couldn't do, you know, for 45 minutes, right? So I've been tested and this, Roland PD knows, tested about every ounce of my discipline. So, thank you. And then for the state, right? I think there's some changes that are needed as well, right? Such as when something gets escalated, there needs to be an urgency classification correlated to the impact of the citizens. It can't be just a blank slate. And the reason why is there's, the bureaucracy has so many swim lanes, right? By not actually giving a weight and impact, all those by default already have delays in the mechanism, right? So in this situation, you had thousands of people that were impacting, pleading for help. And I know I keep looking at you and I do appreciate everything, but this can't, there just needs to be more logic with it, right? How you get to that, right? And I know if you're like me, you're already poking holes in it, right? Which I was doing when I wrote this down. How do you get to that, right? Because some of it is discretionary. There's a lot of feelings, emotions, right? But I think that's the challenge, right? How do we get to that point, right? Nobody should have to go through this again. It's not saying that corrective measures won't be three years down the line. It's just showing empathy, right? It's showing compassion, showing a sense that you have it. It will help with organization. It just is something that's needed. And this is an issue that's trending throughout the state and the country, if you look at it, right? Food recycling is just one of many that is struggling right now in a, in a country that's really trying to go green. So that, that's one that I would ask the state to come back with on that. And that's one that I'm going to push up through probably Donna and Rick. I know that's not going to be easy, but we have to do something, right? This, this just can't go on for this long for other people. That's how selfless I am. Like, I don't say that for a pat on the back. I literally want nobody else to go through what we went through here. It's not acceptable. And then I think the state needs to review the permitting system in correlation to the Clean Air Permit, right? The Clean Act, Clean Act Air Permit. And what I mean by that is you should never have a company that's burning 400-plus tons of trash a day, not required, a Clean Air Act. It's the most insane thing I've ever heard. And why it happened, I have my suspicions. I'll leave that alone. However, it just shouldn't happen. Bottom line, it's not acceptable. So I know I'm kind of looking at you all and I know you have your own, I want to respect your individual apartments and I'm sure you have your own processes and whatnot. I don't know who this needs to go to. But I'd ask that somebody take that one and get it to the right person. Because again, the Brightfeeds is, it's a cool thing that you're doing. I said that since day one. Know that. I've been very honest with that. I like what you're doing. However, company in that amount, you know, always been required a permit. If they, if they were required the permit, I think that this meeting we're having now likely would have happened maybe a year ago, right? Maybe it wouldn't have happened at all, right? Because sometimes new companies, and it's not a knock on you, don't know what you need to do, right? Sometimes you don't have a lot of capital. But one thing that helps to find capital, one thing that helps to muster investors is a little more pressure, right? I don't even say that being a wise guy, right? I guarantee money would have been found if the state put pressure on earlier, right? Because it is a cool idea and there is a need for it. So I'm going to leave it at that. That's a lot of actions going around. At the end of the day, you don't have to do any of them. Did say I'm going to keep coming to the council meetings. I'd hope that you would take action on this. And we look forward to the health department results. I want to thank you a lot. I do know that there's a couple of reports of odor, but it's been very minimal. I think from our end, I think, I think it's fair for the citizens to stay cautiously, cautiously optimistic. And the reason why, and it's, it's not, thank you, again, but just to level set. Every time that we've said thank you, something's happened where we've taken three steps back, right? So I think by default, we've been kicked so many times that we're just kind of a little abused. And I don't say that like for the poor me's. We just need time. We need time to heal and we need time to give this time so that we can trust it. Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Anyone else in the audience? Feel free. Yes, sir.
I must trust you to task a board. First off, I want to thank Brightfeeds, all right, for installing that equipment. Since the equipment has been installed, been real noticeable. Day before yesterday, there was some odor. This morning, there was some odor, but it's tolerable. Nothing like last year. Right? I can actually go outside, do my job. I get a headache every day. I get sick in my stomach. It's a little nuisance, but you know, it's tolerable, you know? For Deep, and this is also with Brightfeeds. It's my opinion, okay, that I think you owe it to the citizens of Berlin. Hey, when it comes to the penalty phase, their violation, that you announce it to the citizens of Berlin, what the penalty was. Maybe release a joint statement, you know, so to the town, so the town can post it. Because we have been dealing with it for a year and a half. And it's only right, you know, because otherwise we're going to feel like you're giving us the brush off. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Brightfeeds. Thank you, Deep.
Thanks. Okay. Anyone else from the audience?
Hi, my name is Tyler Shuffley. I live at 520, 520 Worthington Ridge. So every here and there, I do get like a small, like slight smell from Brightfeeds. And my dad's actually a plumber and you guys know where New Burton Plumbing Supply is. It's like two buildings away from, well, not two buildings, one building away from Brightfeeds. So as he goes there, he, he actually called me one day and said, hey, did you, do you smell Brightfeeds? And I said, no. And he said, it smells terrible. And I asked the workers, Donna, Ryan, Diane and whatever her name is, Manny. I asked all of them if they smelled it and they said yes. And normally they always smell it in the building. And this morning, I actually did get a little reek of it. And this afternoon, as soon as I got off the bus, I got a reek of it. And then also I do still hear a little bit of the noise and my mom actually can't sleep with the window. She could start sleeping with the windows open, but every here and there, it's a little bit noisy. But that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? Is somebody online? Yes. Yep.
Thank you. Hi, Catherine Mees, 15 Main Street, East Berlin. I'm just, I have a couple of questions about the Clean Air Act permit and how it is that, or under what, I guess, legality Brightfeeds is being allowed to operate in the interim until the permit is in place.
Okay. Well, yeah, thank you for that. We'll, we'll handle those answers to those in a moment. And anyone else online that's? There, Kate? No, I don't see anybody. No one? We're good. Okay. No one. We're good here, folks? Okay, thank you. So if we could take, I think we, do we have a, what was the first question? No, for the, for the town, yeah, well, we'll have to look at the license thing. I'm not, we'll look at that process. The sound ordinance, we're already working on it. It's, we have, we had an ordinance meeting last week. We have one next week for a couple of items, one of them being the sound ordinance. So we're working on adding the different frequencies, which were not in there. So that, that'll be done relatively soon. We'll take care of that. And Deep would be, I guess, the next to answer a couple of the questions. Oh, yes, yes, yes. No, sure, sure.
I'll just, yes, what do you got here? I'll just point out that SH Acoustics is, is helping us in drafting that noise ordinance.
Yes.
Well, so we're working with the experts to make sure that.
The town attorney and S and H.
And their town attorney.
Yeah. Yeah. So that we'll, we'll get, we'll get that done relatively quickly. So that'll be good. Trying to think of what else here. I think we got everybody's updates. Got everybody?
Okay, so.
Where's yours, sir?
Okay, thank you. You're going to have to remind me of all the questions. Let me start with the, like, really technical stuff. So for the modeling assumptions, yeah, when I said conservative, it's like an overestimation of anyone's exposure. So use five years of meteorology in the model. And the numbers that we're giving DPH represent, it's called high first high. So it's the highest 24-hour average computed based on five years of meteorology at any location in the ambient air, which essentially just excludes Brightfeeds property. So that's the first value that they'll use. And the emission rate is based on, we normally use like a three-run average because the stack test consists of three one-hour runs. But for, you know, again, But for, you know, again, this very conservative first stab at it, we would use just the highest run. And we use different test methods on, on e- each run consisted of the same test methods, multiple test methods for the same pollutant. We would use the most conservative, the, the highest result from those test methods. And we would use the lowest flow rate. I guess the, the lower the, the volumetric flow rate from the stack, the, the, um, the, the worse the dispersion is, the higher the ambient concentration. And which is nonsensical because the highest emission rate would, you know, looking at the data, it didn't occur during the run with the lowest flow rate. So it doesn't even make, it's so conservative, it doesn't make sense. But that's how we would look at it initially. And then we would look at, we would look at like an annual average concentration. So we would look at different iterations of that. But we'd, we would start off by making very, very conservative assumptions. So that's what we're modeling now. That answer my question? No, yeah, um. Okay.
I think the, uh, the, the other thing that was mentioned was the, um, faster response.
Fast, okay. So yeah, let's talk about that. Let's talk about the, uh, the penalty. Let me start with the penalty. So, um, uh, you know, again, and I've said this, we, we don't really comment on, on, ongoing enforcement matters. However, any penalty, it's not only public record, but it's, um, it's, it's published on our, um, website. But yeah, we'll tell you about the, you know, any, any penalty that, um, uh, penalty action that should occur. So you would know about that. Um, also we, the, the municipal CEO is notified, yeah, for any. You'd be notified, but, um, we'll tell you about that. Yeah, the con, i- if, if there's like any kind of consent order, like any kind of administrative action that we could take, um, that's filed on the land records and, and the municipal CEO is notified. Okay, let me go to the, the permitting question. Um, so the, the permitting process is underway. We're in an enforcement phase right now. Um, under state law, lack of a permit is not in and of itself grounds for, um, the issuance of a cease and desist order. That's really my only answer to that question. It's just, you know, there's due process built into, to state law. That's what state law says. We, um, genuinely welcome all of your, your feedback on the, um, the permitting process and how we've responded to these complaints. And I'm happy that we are where we are right now. Um, and I do understand there's still some residual reports of odor and that's something that we're going to continue to address. The only thing I would push back on is that our response wasn't compassionate. I can one hundred percent understand, um, you know, the frustration and everything. I just want you to know that everyone here, everyone that has literally lost sleep, lost sleep over this case, wanting it to, to come to a resolution for all of you. So we're working within, you know, our statutory authorities and our regulations. Um, but I just don't want you to think that we were heartless or didn't care. I understand that the frustration, um, I understand the length of time that it took to come to a, a, um, resolution on the compliance side. Um, I just don't want you to walk away thinking that we didn't care because we very, very much cared. Um, and the, that, uh, yeah, I, right, yeah. Yeah, um. Appreciate that. Did I hit everything? Oh. Right. Okay. Yeah. So, so, um, again, there were no public, we have emission factors for everything. We have emission factors for boilers. We have emission factors for turbines. We have emission factors for chemical manufacturing. I mean, any kind, you know, any power, power plants, um, uh, bulk petroleum storage, any of these facilities, you know, any of these manufacturing facilities that we have in, we have, we have emission factors. Um, there's a compendium of, of emission factors called AP forty-two, which EPA maintains. Um, we're also, you know, we talk with other states and local agencies and EPA all the time. So if it's, if it's, um, uh, not an emission factor that's published in AP forty-two or, um, any other federal database, then we'll ask other states. We did not have emission factors for, um, this specific source category. So what we did was, um, uh, you know, once we started getting odor complaints and, um, uh, we, we required a, the, the stack test. Um, and we used, um, the stack test results to come up with emission factors. If they were actually, they're, they're not burning three hundred to four hundred. The, the rules are different for incinerators. So they're heating it and dehydrating it, but it's not actually being burned. So there's a distinction there, um, because if, if it's being burned and they're, the, the, the permitting rules applicable to incinerators are very different than the, the permitting rules, um, pertaining to, to non-incinerators. But, you know, before we could conclus- conclusively say a permit's required, we needed emission factors. It's why we required the stack test. This is usually like a, uh, um, you know, years long process, um, you know, done by EPA's Office of, uh, Research and Development. But in this case, this was a, you know, it's a pretty unique source. Um, and that's why we required the, the stack test.
And, and then the, the, Catherine, the lady on, online asking about the Clean Air Act, I don't know if you, is that, did you cover that overall and what?
I mean, all I can say is that under state law, operation without a permit is not in and of itself grounds for, um, for the issuance of a cease and desist order.
Okay.
Do you have?
Okay. I think we hit, I think we hit everything. I wrote most of them down. So I think we're good with everything.
Alrighty.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. One more follow-up? One more follow-up? Yes.
Ryan Malloy, eighty-four Juniper. Um, so one hundred percent appreciate everything you guys have done, right? To, to clarify, right? What I'm saying is it's, uh, it's a process failure at the state. I think you guys actually did far more, far faster than you would typically under circumstances, right? Given the criticality. What I'm saying is the process drives the empathy, process drives the compassion. It's not a personal thing whatsoever. What I'm saying is there needs to be a weighted way to in, uh, categorize the impact so that that can create some sort of response by deep. Even if that means we don't, so number one, right? In corporate USA, what's a atypical response to that? Well, we don't have resources. But I get it. What I'm saying is this is an outlier. If it reaches that criticality, maybe there's a floating budget for consultants to come in and help. Right? What I'm saying is the process drives whether there's empathy. The process drives whether there's compassion. The impact is an impact no matter what. Right now, the way it looks like from our end is everything gets flatlined, right? And then it gets put into that queue, right? And it doesn't mean you guys don't care. You do. You do care. I, but what I'm saying is when you have towns and thousands of people in this situation, hundreds of people saying they're sick, I mean, dry healing. Their eyes were watering, right? Um, immediate headaches, like it felt like, um, ten thousand feet coming now when you're landing on a plane, that crackling sound, right? When you, when you smell it. That's what I'm saying. That drives it. Right? So it's nothing personal. I want to be real clear on that. We take this action back and if you guys discuss this internally, I'm looking for some way that the state classifies it. The empathy and the compassion is correlated to the impact. Bottom line. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? We good? Nobody? Yes, yes, Catherine. Yeah.
Thank you, Catherine Meese, fifteen Main Street, East Berlin. Uh, I just wanted to ask one additional question about the, the toxicology that was mentioned. So is there any information that can be shared tonight on what VOCs were coming out of the stack? I know the last meeting, um, there was only a, a little bit of information that was available on it. Um, I'm just wondering if there's any additional information at this time.
There's no additional information. I know it's not too helpful for you, but we don't have any additional information. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. But forthcoming, as you mentioned. Yes, yes. Yeah, sure.
So, um, the, I mean, we, we obviously have the stack data. It, it's, um, not meaningful because it's not what, um, from a, from a health perspective, because it's not, um, what anyone's exposed to. It's what's coming out of the stack. So, and that's what we have to model, right? Is from the stack, um, to the ambient air. And so we use a, it's, it's a, um, longstanding federally approved, federally developed dispersion model. So when we meet next, that's what we'll be able to talk about, um, is how we did the modeling. Then how D P H did the, um, uh, toxicology analysis.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. So I think we've handled everything. Appreciate, you know, how far we've come to everyone involved here with Brightfeeds and certainly the state, all the agencies, uh, the towns. Uh, I believe done our part, which will not end tonight, of course. But, um, you know, we've come a long way and I'm thankful we, we did finally get here where, um, the noise and the odor seems to be mostly gone, which, which is great to hear and doesn't seem to be bothering anybody, even, even better. And I know there's still some more work to do, which we will continue to do from the state level and Brightfeeds and the town. So, uh, we'll look, when we get the rest of that data, we'll, we'll look to have another quick meeting for the public. Um, whenever that would be, maybe next, you know, middle of the next month or whenever, whenever the information is out there. We'll get a quick meeting together and, and update the public. So anything else you could think of? No? All right. Well, that's great. Thank you all folks for coming and everyone working together to, to get to this point. And I think we've got a lot done, like said, and, uh, you know, a little bit more to do, which we will, we'll finish. So thank you all. Don't move. Motion to all of us. Yeah. Two of us, yes. We don't, can't really adjourn it, but, uh, sorry, two.